I'd like to call the order of the meeting of the village board for June 30th, June 20th, 2023. Please join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And clerk, please call the roll.
President De Simone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Frye?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Here.
That's six.
This time we move to public comment. Does anyone wish to address the floor? If so, please approach the podium and state your name.
Yes. Valerie Special?
Hi, Valerie Special. In the past, it was made very clear that trustees do not ask questions during the trustee meetings because robust conversations are had during the committee of the whole. During the months of June, July, and December, the committee of the whole does not meet. To my surprise, when reviewing this week's agenda, I saw that you will be proceeding with a vote on the property formerly known as Cascade Banquets. This property was purchased by the village in 2021 for 1.1 million. As Evan remarked in the May committee of the whole, it was purchased to remove the pole sign. This property is now being sold at a discount to A&amp;E Luxury Apartments, which, by the way, they're very beautiful apartments from what they showed through the CDC meeting. My concern is that the variance request did not have a chance to be reviewed during the robust conversations that usually would happen at committee of the whole. I ask you to delay all votes for variances on this property and any other that require variances until the next committee of the whole meeting where you can have your robust conversations.
Mr. McCullough?
Chris McCullough, 829 Brentwood Drive. It is critical that village leadership improve communication with residents concerning important activities that will affect our community members. The current version of the Community Investment Plan, commonly known as the CIP, has been in existence since at least 2022. Since at least 2022. Thus, village leadership is known since at least 2022 that work on Diana Court from Pamela to Brentwood Drive and on Jacqueline and Pamela was scheduled. This was a project that was planned some time ago. While I'm aware that some residents that reside at addresses on these streets received limited communication, many residents who reside in the subdivision, who traverse these streets regularly, received no communication at all concerning road construction in our area. Pavement milling began on May 15th, 2023, and was completed on May 16th, 2023. Installation of the new asphalt surface did not begin until June 14th, 2023. Sawhorses used as road safety markers are still stored on Diana on June 20th, 2023 today. A week since construction concluded. Signs are also scattered about on properties and parkways in the area as well. Between May 16th and June 14th, we had very few days of rain, so weather did not affect this timeline in a meaningful way. I do not understand why this project required a month from start to completion. I have had past experiences with this type of matter in which the safety of children and seniors was jeopardized. Manhole covers and couplings that are rusted, laying in parkways are tempting for children to play on and around. I've witnessed this on multiple occasions on this project and others. This continues to be an issue that's unresolved. Why can't the village communicate with residents directly impacted by construction, understanding that more residents than just those that live on streets under construction are affected? On multiple occasions, I was unable to traverse Diana and had to turn around to exit the subdivision on County Line Road, which also has a tremendous amount of construction on and around it. I observed identical situations from other residents as well. A tentative and realistic timeframe of work shared with residents would be very beneficial. There's a very easy and cost-effective means to communicate with residents about construction projects. Rather than focusing on self-promotion and product placement in images posted on village social media sites, as evident in a posting on June 15th at 2:03 PM and another one with a baseball from Mr. Perez's Insurance Agency strategically taken from May 22nd at 11:40 AM. Rather than focusing on these kinds of posts, we should be using our social media sites to share this kind of important information, timelines and construction projects, when they will begin, when they will be completed, and when there are delays that are inevitable.
Thirty seconds.
Please stop using hard-earned taxpayer dollars to advertise Mr. Perez's Insurance Agency. A village employee would have been utilized to take the photos that are posted, and an employee to post the photos to Facebook. Those employees' salaries are paid for by the taxpayer. I suggest using social media sites to communicate meaningful information. Are you, are the trustees fearful of the village president or the debts that you owe to each other and the village president?
Thank you, Ms. McCullough. That's three minutes.
Many of which are quantifiable and publicly available, and thus not willing to act in the best interest of those who you serve?
Now, if I can take the opportunity just to highlight that we do have our, on our website, construction updates that are updated regularly. We also have a GIS story map, so all that's on there. So we encourage everyone to go there. We probably should do some more publicity of that, but it's all out there.
Mr. Robert Benson?
As far as information, it's probably your own fault for me being here talking about noise because I went through the agenda and looked at each of the individual postings that you had, and I couldn't believe the comments, or the restrictions that you're putting in for the the sound barrier for the noise. And I'm, I'm not sure. There's some things that I think are valid points, but there's other, the 60 decibels I put down in my comment was unbelievable because 60 decibels is normal conversation. I'm probably speaking louder than just 60 decibels. Now, the restrictions are for, at the line of your, your property and so forth. But, I mean, it just seems so restrictive. And I just want to go back and say that I'm probably one of the, my household is probably one of the quietest ones in our neighborhood. But, I mean, when, when the music in the park is going on, you're going way beyond 60 decibels. And, and it's, is that not, is that, is that get a pass or something? I just can't understand that. Now, there's some cars, when I'm walking, I walk all over the place, that are very loud, and I don't know if that's the reason for this ordinance, but it just seems very restrictive. And then to have it 55 decibels at night seems just bizarre. So, I, I'm sorry, I'm rattling on, but it just seems very restrictive. Maybe if you could give some explanation why the 60 decibels was put into play, it would be helpful. But 60 decibels is, is nothing. I told my neighbor that I'm going to report her because her laugh is louder than 60 decibels. So, I won't report her really, but thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Joanne Bell?
980 County Line Road. Three, quick things. You guys hire lawn care people to do senior citizen homes. My neighbor has one. They ruined my fence. They won't come and fix it. We've contacted them. We were told by the village to contact the lawn people. They won't come and fix our fence. They've damaged, I have pictures to prove that they damaged it. They've came, they've looked, they haven't come back in two weeks. So, I don't know what to do in this case. The village told us to call the lawn care. We did. Now, nothing's being done. Second thing is 960 County Line Road. That empty lot there is a total mess. My backyard looks at a forest in there. There's a lot of animals that go in there. I have two senior dogs that stay in my backyard during the daytime. And I'm afraid they're going to get underneath the fence and come into my yard and attack my senior dogs. One can barely walk. The other one is starting to not being able to walk. So, something needs to be done with that empty lot at 960 because it's just a total mess, and it's disgusting to look at when we have people over in our backyard. The other thing is, I went to Franklin Park Police Department for the corner of County Line and Grand. They put a sign up about 100 feet from the street saying, "Left lane, turn and straight. Right lane, right lane, turn only." People are still going straight in that lane, and you've got people literally almost colliding there. I don't know what village to call. Almhurst, Bensonville, North Lake, or Franklin Park. But I have videos of people almost colliding because they're not obeying that sign. Something needs to be done with the sign in front of that street light. Because left lane, straight. Right lane, only. Turn. No one's obeying that every day. That's the only way I can go is to go onto Grand Avenue, go to work, go west. So, I don't know what to do in this case. It's a concern for everybody who drives down County Line Road, going south on County Line Road. So, I need those three things adjusted to see what we can do.
Ms. Bell, if you provide your phone number to my assistant over here, Mary, I'll have CED, someone from CED, give you a call about the County Line Road 960, and then we'll have someone from Public Works with the lawn care and the street signs. All right. Thank you.
Roy Dominguez?
I'm here in regards to the banquet hall on Irving Park Road. In the pamphlet that was handed out at the last meeting, it indicates a site plan for the proposal's development will not adversely impact adjacent properties. Well, my property is adjacent to that. My brother's is, and the rest of the neighborhood. I can't see what the the value of my house would be after the six-story building will be in my backyard. The second point is, one exit on the south side of the building for 115 residents. You got 184 parking spots. There's supposed to be a study done. Was that study even done yet? 184 spots consisting of commercial, handicap, visitor parking. The math just doesn't add up. That's a whole lot of cars and a small little lot. It's not going to really work. You're going to have cars in our neighborhood. It's not an overnight parking. I don't know how the fire department's going to get back there with, with one entrance. If there's a fire on the sixth floor, they're not going to come with a pickup truck. They're going to come with a ladder to accommodate. You gave them all the, the rights of the easements, 10-foot setbacks. Now I'll have cars parked against my house. If they back in, start the car up from the balcony, and the exhaust is going to go right up to the second-floor window of mine. I don't know what to say. I think it's a bad deal. That building should be smaller, whatever it is. It's not, it's, you're going to impact the whole neighborhood. You're going to impact Irving Park Road. And I don't know how it's going to work out if there's ever an issue there with the fire department. All right. Thank you.
That's it?
That's all.
This will conclude public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the May 23rd, 2023 village board meeting?
Give a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Any modifications to the minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the June 13th, 2023 special village board meeting?
You have a motion?
There's a second.
Second.
Any modifications to those minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. The minutes are approved. The next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of $3,084,218.58. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the warrant? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. The warrant is approved. There are no items on the consent agenda. Under administration resolution approving a license agreement for use of village-owned property at 302 West Green Street by Roots and Wings. It's be the NFP for 2023 through 2026. Is there a motion?
You have a motion?
Do we have a second?
Second.
There being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion? Yeah, this is a good one for us. Several years ago, the teen center ceased operations, and we had a plan to help the Park District fund running programming there. We're going to give them $60,000. The Park District never really was able to get that off the ground, so the teen center sat vacant for the last couple of years. One of our local community members, Erin Loza, she has been involved in DuCap for a number of years, as well as several other not-for-profits serving the youth of this community. She's finally started her own not-for-profit, and we're going to utilize her to operate her not-for-profit Roots and Wings out of the teen center. This is a lease tonight for three years. There's no cost to her for this first three years, but she is making significant improvements to the property. They're doing a lot of flooring projects, equipment, furniture, that type of stuff. We are fully insured on this. The focus is on the underserved youth in our community, the ones that usually slip through the cracks. We know, we do have a large immigrant population that isn't served by traditional means. She wants to focus on that, but she's also trying to integrate that into the rest of the community. So, it checks a lot of the boxes of what we're trying to accomplish and does something for the kids that I think we'll see a lot of benefit from. Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Under Community and Economic Development's ordinance approving a special use permit for massage therapy establishment 22 North Addison Street. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Being a motion and a second, we have discussion. I'll let Curtis lead off on the next eight items.
Yep. So you, you might remember this item from a previous board meeting. CDC initially recommended denial. The petitioner requested an appeal, and we had the board recommend to remand the case back down to CDC. The petitioner did present a lot of new evidence at the, at the next CDC meeting, including the hiring of professional massage therapy, like a licensed therapist, discussion of hours of operation, just the way the facility works, the private room for this. Essentially checked all the boxes, and the CDC felt way more comfortable with this use, and so they recommended approval of the special use for massage therapy. And so they voted 6-0 to recommend approval, and it's back in front of you today.
Do we have any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. The ordinance is passed. Two is an ordinance of Village of Betsville to Page and Cook Counties, Illinois, amending Title X zoning ordinance, Chapter Six zoning district regulations, Chapter Seven uses, Chapter Eight off-street parking and loading, and Chapter Eleven definitions. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion, Curtis?
Yeah, so you know, from time to time, we like to try to clean our code a little bit when we find issues. So, these are really several minor changes. The first one relates to parking standards and pedestrian circulation standards. This kind of goes in tandem with, we, we had just approved a new bollard standards a meeting or two ago. It's sort of a new thing we're seeing, especially in kind of commercial strip centers, retail. So, we had a, an issue in our code where we were requiring essentially elevation change, basically a sidewalk if, if there were bollards there. And it doesn't really make sense if you have bollards. We had, we had immediate pushback on a, on a proposed development right after we approved the bollard standards, and we had to grant a variance. And so we cleaned that up to remove that elevation change if there's bollards. The facade design standards, this is because we had a, a business in town that basically slipped through and installed metal shutters on the outside of the business. We are now not allowing that to occur. You can install them inside. They can, they can be on the inside of the windows, but they can no longer be on the outside of the business. We want to put a stop to that. So, that's the, that's the second one for facade design standards. Bicycle parking requirements table, this is just cleaning up to make it more cohesive with other definitions in there. Essentially, I think before said, or said general warehousing, and we're changing it to industrial to kind of match. So, just a little cleanup of kind of definitions and language in the code. And then the motor vehicle sales office only, this is one, it's a little unique. So, we do off, we do already approve motor vehicles sales in two situations. One's indoor sales and one's outdoor sales. Both those involve cars, you know, actually being sold on the property. We have been approached by several motor vehicle users about doing office only, and we didn't have a way to approve that really. The state requires you to sign off on a form that states that it's allowed by zoning, and technically, if we were allowing motor vehicle sales, you would have to allow cars in the lot. And we didn't feel comfortable signing off on that state form. So, we're creating a use category in the code for office only so we can sign off for the state dealership license. This is actually really good for the village too because it means their offices would be in here. We would actually get the sales tax on sales, even if they're not actually selling the cars in the village. So, it's, we're just creating a use category to allow for these uses because we've been approached a couple of times now just for office-only sales. Community Development Commission did approve all of these 5-0.
Do we have any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. The ordinance is passed. Ordinance approving a variation for modified striping at 621 North Illinois Route 83. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, a second, Curtis?
So, BXT is the petitioner here. They're actually in front of us not too long ago for their initial special use here for kind of a variety of things. It's, it's a kind of truck center. The south end of the, the lot is the truck court. And then they, they, this is a gullible property, actually done, did a ton of investment here, so brought the building way up to standard. It's a single user. Before, we had problems. It was multi-user. So, it really cleaned up the property. Right away, the user noticed an issue. He was parking the bobtails. The, it's just the tractor version, the tractor portion of the truck, the front ends. He was parking them on the, in the front lot. The parking spaces aren't big enough that if you're just doing standard parking spaces. So, this variance is to allow for bobtail parking spaces and the, and kind of the northern portion of that property there. So, just so he's, according to code, is allowed to park, park the bobtails there. So, it's a total of 22 spaces. We think this is fine. It'll help clean up the lot, and he's only allowed to park in those approved spaces this way. So, it actually helps us kind of track it a little bit better, too. All the trailers will still have to be parked in that southern lot. Community Development Commission did unanimously approve this one 6-0.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. The ordinance is passed. Four is an ordinance approving a variation for a fence in the corner side yard of 143 Daniel Drive. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
Yeah, so we see a lot of corner side yard fence variations. It's usually on these atypical lots, so you'll notice this lot is definitely odd-shaped. The, the fence, there is a current fence there. It's a six-foot privacy fence. They're actually proposing a four-foot ornamental black fence, so smaller and not privacy. You actually be able to see through it. So, it extends a little bit further out into the, the corner side yard than the current one does. If this was, if they were going to install a privacy fence, I think we would have more issues, but because it's only a four-foot ornamental, we're okay with the, the extension closer to the road, kind of towards the sidewalk. It's still six foot off of the sidewalk. But it helps her extend that backyard a little bit, and CDC unanimously approved this one 6-0.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. The ordinance is passed. Five is an ordinance granting approval of site plan review and variations, and denying a variation outdoor storage area location for a new industrial development at 600 through 700 Devon. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
So, this is another, a great new development coming. So, this is a gullible property. A lot of you might be familiar with this property. It actually, I think, several years ago, had come through with a variation of some sort of a, of a development, but it kind of never went anywhere. So, they're back looking to develop this sort of mid-sized industrial development here. Forty-four thousand square foot industrial building and about 3,200 square foot office on the corner there. Trucks behind with some docks, and then some truck parking on that east side there. So, for the most part, we're, we're, we're on board with everything that they're proposing. The, the one issue that was mentioned there, we denied a variance for outdoor storage area location. And that is actually, so it's the, the northeast corner. There's basically three truck parking spaces that are technically in front of the building line. That's what was denied, is those three spaces. We, we typically don't like to see truck parking out towards the street. We want it behind the building. You know, this is on the side. We, we're just basically anticipating for some, you know, more screening here to happen. But the, the rest of the variations and everything, you know, we're, we're fine with. It actually works out really well in this sort of odd-shaped lot that, that gullible has here. So, the Community Development Commission voting unanimously 6-0 for the majority of these, for the denial, the Community Development Commission voted 1-5 to recommend the denial.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. The ordinance is passed. Number six is an ordinance approving special use permits for a new warehouse and retail showroom at 237 through 239 James Street. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
So, this is a retail use in industrial, and that's why there's special use requirements. So, the only thing we are really concerned about here is customer parking. They actually don't have any parking directly on James Street out front, but they do have a lot of parking in the, in the rear here. So, you know, it, it's an outlet. They're not going to have a ton of customer, like, retail traffic, you know, as a traditional retail, but we are still a little concerned. So, yeah, so they're, that's, this is their little mock-up here, that the spaces they show in front aren't actually parking. It's, it's no parking along that street there. So, they do have parking in the back, and they do have some docks for loading, unloading, so we're confident that this is a, a fine use in this location, but it did require two special uses to, to move over here. They're actually currently on County Line Road in the village. Community Development Commission did vote 6-0 to recommend approval.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. The ordinance is passed. Seven is an ordinance granting approval of a site plan review and variations to construct a new six-story mixed-use residential building at 800 West Irving Park Road. Is there a motion to approve?
I have a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
Yeah, so this is, this is another great project. This is obviously the, the Cascade Site. The village did purchase this site a, a couple of years ago in order to essentially control the destiny of the, of the development here. We had, we had heard that, so there are some other groups poking around, and, you know, we were looking to make sure that, you know, it essentially wasn't another low-quality use going into there. A&amp;E has a former project in the village that we were very impressed with, and then they have a, a brand-new project in Franklin Park that we went and visited, that it's, it's phenomenal. And that's what this new development is really based on. So, if you get a chance to go over and check out that Franklin Park, Park property, it's, it's, it's really something. So, this is a six-story mixed-use. So, the, the Irving Park side is all the commercial. There's about 9,000 square foot of, of retail, basically, along Irving Park, and then two rows of retail parking. So, the, the majority of the in-and-out, the retail parking is off of Irving Park. Those existing curb cuts are planned to stay off of Irving. So, the residential is what comes off of East View, and that's the access to the south there. And then, so there is a parking lot, and then there is an underground garage on this facility. There's also a, a smaller garage on the, sort of, that's the southwest corner, but that's all residential only on the back, maybe some deliveries and employee parking, but for the most part, this is going to be residential only. We are requiring them to perform a traffic study. That is underway now. It has been ordered. So, the traffic study is for East View. East View right now is a small right-of-way. We have been planning this a little longer than just this development, so with the Gem development right across the street, we gave them a part of Old Alley right-of-way to the south of their property, and they gave us part of the, the east side of their site so we could extend East View, make it a standard right-of-way. And then with the traffic study, we're going to make sure that that intersection is going to work, right? So, the biggest thing we're concerned about right now is a left-turn lane, if there, if, if we need a left turn out of there. And so, we're, we'll go through the traffic study. There's a good chance that IDOT was going to require a traffic study as well. There's a lot of in-and-out here. So, the traffic study is going to tell us a lot about East View, really. We're confident that it's going to be fine. It's just whether it's going to be a left-turn lane that's needed or not on this site. You know, and not, there are, you know, five stories of residents. There are a lot of, you know, parking spaces, but not everybody's coming in and out of the site at once, right? So, there is no other outlet. We don't anticipate a lot of residential going south into the neighborhood here. It loops back around. So, I mean, people are going to basically go north and, and into this site. That's, you know, we don't anticipate them driving into the neighborhood for any reason. So, you know, this is a substantial investment. We, I mean, right now, the, the property taxes are low because, you know, it's been vacant for a while, but, I mean, regardless, if this was- But, I mean, regardless, if this was still a functioning retail site, we think the, the taxes on this new property are going to be, are just knocking it out of the park. I mean, you're talking, you know, millions of dollars over the life of the, of what we would consider sort of a TIF deal, right? So we use tax information, finance and money to purchase the property. We're going to make it, make it back and some on the, on this deal. This is a great investment and, and it, it just, it's something that you really look to when you're, when you're trying to do these types of things. I think it worked out really well for us when we purchased this site, because this is the type of deal that comes out of that type of investment.
That's exactly right. It's, this is what TIF exists for. There is a functionally obsolete vacant banquet hall that had been vacant for years. It's being redeveloped. It's being torn down. We're going to build a, a new high-quality, industry-leading apartment complex there, mixed-use development. I couldn't be happier with this. I do have to say, as you guys know, I came to you, we initially bought it with a deal that I thought was a good one. You guys said that we can do better, Evan. We did better on this one, so thank you for your guidance on that.
You're here for me, Andy, right? You got a couple, you got a couple of seconds for some questions? Can you hold the microphone? Okay, so a couple of questions that I have is, what happens if the, the traffic study comes back unfavorable?
Well, we would go back to the development team and, and figure out a solution. So yeah, I mean, if, if something in the traffic study says, you know, this isn't going to work for whatever reason, then we're going to have to go back to the drawing board, and I think they're aware of that as well.
Okay. So if we, say if we vote yes today and the traffic study comes back unfavorable, we could revisit it, correct?
If, well, if the development project, if it changes from what we're approving today, we're going to have to go back through the process, so yeah.
Second question, and I, I went over to one of the residents' homes. He's got a, he's got a significant issue, concern. We can always make, I mean, well, you said today, I didn't, we didn't talk about the whole backing, and we can always make that, that would be the south side of the fence. We can always make that pulling only, right? Signs, no backing in. I mean, I think that would suffice that. Is there any way that we can have a second exit from the rear of that building going towards Irving Park Road on the property? Is there, is there anything they could shift or move that can allow that rear traffic to also flow out not only on the side street, but out of the parking lot itself?
I think in the new design, we have two exits and two entrances. One is from the east view, and the other one will be on the southeast corner.
But are you, are you sending them back into the, right, into the homes or back to Irving? I want to see if they can go to Irving Park Road.
Irving Park Road, it's going to be difficult to make the exit to Irving Park Road.
Do, do you, do you still have the, the site plan up?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, if, I don't know if you can see the full, yeah, it's tough to see on that. If, if, if the site plan basically shows, I mean, they went, you know, lot line to lot line, the width of that, for that building. You know, the site is a little deeper than it is wide, so I think it makes it difficult. They actually, we were discussing originally, just going lot line to lot line, I think they needed to pick up some extra units. That's why you got the L that kind of wraps around on Eastview there to get some more space.
Next page, it's in the.
Go one more down.
Right there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So then that southeast corner there, you see that arrow? Is that where we're saying we will circulate onto as a Park View to, out to Irving Park Road?
Yes, yes.
So wait a minute, where's Irving Park here?
Up top.
It's in top.
Up top, okay. And then where, where are our exits? We got two.
The bottom arrows.
Bottom left.
Left and right.
And right.
And right, yeah, two exits.
Is it, no, Eastview on the left part.
Do you have access, a, access to that street from, from your property?
In the new revised one, yes. It was proposed by the engineers to have two exits. One in Eastview, one on the, on the south, southeast corner. But to go to Irving Park, there is no way to redesign, and also it's going to interfere with the traffic with the commercial, with the retail. So if you do something, let's say if we bring the building more towards the west, it's going to interfere with the traffic with the retail space.
I mean, it, it, it should be noted, too, actually, the, the drive-in for the garage is on that eastern side at the rear there. I mean, see, you really can't, I don't know how you shift that over and to get around that. I mean, that's basically the only way you might be able to get around is on east side, and I think the way that design happens, I, I don't know. I don't know how you would do that with the garage.
And you said there's underground parking here?
There's underground parking, yeah.
The full, for, full building has underground parking, and also the west wing of the building has indoor parking, heated garages. So when you see the site plan, looks like there is no parking, and, but we exceed the requirement of the parking. We meet and exceed the requirement of the parking.
How, how mu, how many spaces are below?
Now, I don't remember exactly, but I think.
You think eighty-two garage spaces?
Eighty, yeah, eighty-two or eighty-six, something.
Does the.
The total is hundred eighty-four spaces that we have, yeah.
Does the village have plans to, if this project goes through, to reconstruct or redo Eastview to either make it wider or?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that'll be part of what our, our end of this project will be. And then, like I said, we were sort of planning that anyways with the, with the Gem project.
Right.
We knew that we had to widen this at some point, and now that we got developments on both sides, we'll come back through.
Okay.
And where's, where's this place in Franklin Park, you said?
It's in corner, yeah, Franklin and Twenty-Fifth.
I, I think it's a fun point, point out, when the A and E team built that building, the mayor of Franklin Park sold his house and moved into it. Right, it's that nice. It's a marquee building.
So, coming back to our discussion we had last week.
Yeah.
With the exception of not getting flow from the rear to Irving Park Road, and we discussed coming out that little corner, too, when we were out there, I didn't know at the time that that's, it revised. How much is that easier concern on, on that?
Well, see, the, the, according to the documents, the guy who wrote the sub says there's an exit today. But that doesn't mean it's going to actually follow through with an exit on the southeast corner, because that traffic from all the residents in that building would have to cross over private property of the apartment complex next door and cross over his.
I think he owns ten feet of that.
Yeah, it's shared.
That, that, the apartment complex actually encroaches on the banquet hall property.
Right, okay, so.
So it would be just, it would be reversal, because it's actually his, it would be his ten feet.
Is that, is that part of the?
Am I right on that?
Yeah, the guardrail is.
So the guardrail is actually moved, the guardrail was actually moved by the other property when.
Yeah, the guardrails on, on the Cascade property, actually.
Correct, correct. So that, that drawn right there, as you can see where the outline is, is on the southeast corner, is right at my corner of my lawn. So in order for anybody to exit from that banquet hall, it's going to have to cross over the seven thirteen apron.
I would, they would, I would assume they were going, they're going to obtain a cross access easement. Is that the plan already? Yeah, you, it's called a cross access easement, so it would be memorialized, so it would be there forever. Permission to.
I mean, is, is all that traffic going to exit, it's going to be exit, so in other words, you're going to have three hundred cars, not like you're saying every moment, but there's going to be a constant flow of vehicles. I mean, not everybody goes to work at one time. That's a lot of cars on a small lot. You got eighty-four parking spaces below. You got to accommodate visitor parking, you got to accommodate the hand-gather parking, and all those people are going to park, when that guy has a, a little vent at that two-story apartment, that street's already packed. And with all those other people there, that somebody's going to have parties, or somebody, two-bedroom rental is going to have two cars, one-bedroom might have two cars. You're talking three hundred cars, they're not a hundred eighty-four spaces in that set.
We can't have three hundred cars in a hundred eighty-four spaces, though.
Right, you can't.
Right.
That's all I'm saying. There's not enough, there's not enough room. You, you can't predict that everybody's going to leave at one time, and you can't predict how many cars are actually going to have to accommodate that facility. And even widening Eastview Avenue doesn't really resolve anything, because you still have to try to maneuver onto Irving Park Road, and that's the clincher right there. When somebody pulls in that Gem Car Wash going west, he already blocks the traffic right in front of Eastview at Church Road in Irving. At key points of the day, that traffic's all the way up to the Gem Car Wash. So us being residents and five, and five buildings, six units each, on Eastview Avenue in that same horseshoe neighborhood, that's five buildings, six units. So you have all those people, all the residential people, so everybody in that neighborhood's not even going to use Eastview. They're going to go down the park side and make that horseshoe, and so is everybody else. I mean, that's, that's, I know what you're saying about the taxes, but.
So the purpose of you, of widening Eastview, there's a good chance that the, the traffic study will show that there should be a left turn lane there, and so that will help with the stacking going left on Irving.
I, I, I don't, it, it doesn't, you can have that turn lane all the way to the corner of that lot. You got eight cars deep on a turn lane, and that guy's taking fifteen minutes to try to make a left. Everybody's just going to bail and make a right and go down the street and try to turn around and go back west. Is IDOT going to produce a light there? I don't know.
Probably not. It probably wouldn't, yeah.
I mean, that's going to be, and, and the, when school starts with the school buses coming, there will be kids that go to the high school or elementary school for that complex. And the merging of those trains scenario. I got caught by a train over at Church Road, the old police station, you know? My God. And then I tried to go around eighty-three, it's the same aspect. It's, it's ridiculous. I know I can't stop this building aspect, but I'm telling you what, I mean, you're talking, if, if this gentleman builds it, sells it later, who knows what's going to happen with all of us? We all can move on, retire, whatever the case is. But I'm, we're stuck in our neighborhood with that building forever, forever.
I understand.
It's going to devalue it, the neighborhood, that's for sure. Nobody's going to want to buy it and spend time and try to get out of the old neighborhood.
Let's do this traffic study. Let's see how it comes back. Your concerns are valid. We're going to.
There should be an exit to Irving. If it's in business for apartments, have your guys exit on Irving. Don't talk it off by us.
Also, can I just say something from our previous experiences from previous buildings? Cars, they don't live at the same time, and apartments that we've built, they're mostly, eighty percent are one-bedroom. It's not going to affect, we don't have many tenants. They have kids, like you said, for high school or elementary school. Mostly we target high-end luxury apartments. We build for young professionals. And people that, they choose to rent, not to own. So the impact in the traffic in the school, it's minimal. Now, I cannot say that there will be a hundred fifteen apartments there, there will be cars, but it's not going to affect to that point that you're going to see eight or ten cars waiting to go to Irving Park Road in Eastview. Usually in the morning and evening when they come tenants, that's the busiest time, but we never seen that it's a line waiting to get access to, to any of major, major streets. The other concern, the neighbor, we take in consideration, and when we do the, when we do all the study, we try, and our concern is also the effect on the neighborhood. Yeah, definitely, it's nice luxury apartments, and it has effects, positive economic effect on the neighborhood. And also, when we built, for example, the previous site plan showed the garbage enclosure next to the neighbor. And I changed, soon as I saw that one, without coming to the village, or I called my engineers, change, I'm not going to put next to the neighbor. So we are considering all this. We, we want to have positive impact in the neighborhood and to not have a negative impact on next-door neighbor. So that's true. You are, you're going to be the, the first neighbor to that building, but we hope that it's be, it's going to be a building that you enjoy seeing, because we, we're going to build a very nice, beautiful building in that neighborhood. And the concern for the cars, honestly, I don't see it's going to be big, because we share the same concern as owners, because we own this, we're not just built in, we, we are concerned about the parking. That's why we're doing full underground parking. It's going to take eighty-four cars there. Plus on the first floor, we have another thirty-something. So we, we have more than enough parkings, and we're not going to have families living there with three, four cars. Usually they're singles, young professionals, and the impact on the traffic, it's, it's not going to be to that level that you can see a line in Eastview with cars. That's all I under there.
Are those parkings going to be assigned to those apartments? Or is that just random parking?
So assigned, indoor, indoor parkings always are assigned, and outdoor, we don't have yet a plan, but most likely.
I can't hear him talk. If you guys are talking, can you please be quiet?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So indoor, always there are assigned. Outdoor, we, we don't have yet a decision. The, the company is discussing. It's a good question. Maybe it's a good idea to assign outdoor, too. But indoor, for sure, there'll be assigned.
If I may, I know that Roy's points are very valid, but his points are, are valid as well. I mean, we want to better our community and for aesthetics and for taxes, and everything would be a plus. I definitely, you know, am with, let's see what the traffic study says. Look at Elmhurst. Elmhurst is such a small area. You've got the trains there. You've got the buildings there with the, you know, apartment buildings and all those lower storefronts. Yet their traffic is amicable. Everybody's, you know, patient, and they do have residential all around as well. So I don't know, maybe, you know, let's give it a chance and.
That's, that's on York Road, right?
No, I'm not talking about York Road. I'm talking about in Center and Addison, in downtown Elmhurst.
What would happen if the study comes back and says the impact is too great? What would be the solution?
Like I said, your points are very valid as well, so let's see what, what happens.
In that situation, we'd have to go back to the drawing board and we'd go through this process again.
All right.
But there's no way we can move that building over. I know it's probably costing you millions of dollars, but asking me that question.
So I don't want to say no way, but to make it visible, the way how we designed with underground, because that underground parking takes a lot of space there. It has to be excavated. So it has to be redesigned, completely changed, and I don't, honestly, I don't think it's a good idea to have access to Irving Park direct from the back of the building. I don't think anyone would prefer to go directly. Most of the tenants will go probably to the side roads.
Why, why do you think that it's not, that, that exiting on Irving Park is not?
Because you have the retail on the front, and you have the neighbor on this side. There will be new retail stores. There will be a mix of residential and retail. Keeping separate always, it, it's a good idea.
I understand that. I mean, I, but I hope you understand our question.
No, I, I understand that. Yeah, I understand.
I mean, especially maybe in the morning, where, when retail, maybe in that strip mall is not quite open yet.
So, good.
We could sneak some people out.
Yeah.
On their, off of, on the back and on the Irving Park Road.
We are discussing also to allow tenants, they work late, to park during nighttime at the retail. After ten o'clock, they can park in, park in front, so.
But how are you going to control that if they do anyways, or they don't?
You cannot control, but if it's convenient for them, and you give access to that, you put the stickers so they don't get towed, they do, they do that.
All right, so let's, let's have this traffic study on this. Let's vote on this. Let's have this traffic study. If the traffic study comes back god-awful, we're going to have to look at shifting the building over a little bit.
Sure.
I got one more thing to say, though. If, if, if any of you can just do a little field trip to that southeast corner and see the width that I'm talking about, and see the potential of all these people crossing over, because there's a sidewalk there. There are little kids in an apartment. When a kid finds a bicycle, he's not looking. That's a lot of people exiting.
But we're gaining ten more feet than what we saw currently now, I believe, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
So where we were, where we were looking last week, we're gaining ten more feet to the east.
Of the guardrail.
From the guardrail, ten feet.
East, yeah. But that goes in line with the corner of the block there. So even though the guardrail is going east ten foot, it's still crossing over onto the apartment right-of-way. I mean, I can't speak for the guy who owns the building, but you're going to have a lot of, and, and also the blueprint shows north and south parking on that corner. So if you have, let's say, an.
Can you put that blueprint back up, please? Can you put that blueprint back up, please?
Here you go.
If you have an exit on that southeast corner, then that parking, all these parking spots are gonna be eliminated on the corner.
I only see one spot. I don't see any on the, on the east wall, right?
No, there's none.
Well, this is the old plan, because this is.
Oh, yeah, the side plan is most, yeah, that's.
So, so go, go where the parking, so this is parking. So the parking, I'm looking at, oops, I'm looking at the lower part of the screen. So we have, we have what, where the arrow is, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven spots up to the number eighteen. Am I correct on that? And then we have nothing going towards the top of the screen on the east side of the thing. So it looks like they're gonna come out and down. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
They're gonna come out and down, this is, come out and down here. So parking's gonna be from here to here, correct?
Right.
Am I right?
That's correct, yeah.
Where the line is at, right, right there.
Here?
Yeah, that's, that, that arrow's not a, uh, that's not an indication of exit, is it?
This is, they wanna come out here and they wanna come in and out here too.
That's correct.
So this is gonna be his second exit onto that side street. So he, it looks like this lane is gonna come through and down.
Go down.
Yeah.
Am I right?
That's correct, yeah.
And the parking starts one.
Looks like the parking starts on the other side of this big line, like right here.
In seven spaces.
One, two, three, four, five, I mean, it goes all the way across.
Right, of course.
I was just counting to eighteen as my, as my reference point.
Right.
So from here to here should be, is open, am I right on that?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah, that's correct.
Too bad.
Well.
That's, that's how.
Well, that's how we would, that's how we would need it to be.
Put it in, right.
The arrows that are not shaded is the.
Oh, the exit.
Flow of the car and direction.
Those are directional arrows, but that, this looks like the main entrance, the main, well, I don't know why that one is there. Oh, that, why is this one here?
That's what I'm saying.
So that's just, that's just showing traffic flow, the other, the, the non-shaded in ones are literally like what you would think of as being drawn in a parking lot.
Okay, so, in and out.
Yeah. Yeah, the darker ones are showing actual exits.
Exits.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're saying there's gonna be a definite exit on the southeast.
That's what they're proposing right now, yeah.
Yeah. And that will help with the traffic to, um, Eastview.
They're just gonna flow out, uh.
Yeah.
It's gonna disperse the flow.
Yeah, it's gonna disperse.
All right, I'm just, I'm, I'm just saying if you guys wanna just go take a look back.
We'll do. Definitely come over.
Yeah.
That's a lot of people in a residential neighborhood, we all lived there for a long time. Not saying we're not opposed to progress, I'm giving you a lot, it's just, I don't know. I think, uh, I know what he's saying, it would take a lot to reconstruct the architect on that building to shorten it. I just wish the, uh, you know, uh, the tempo he's been on the property line should have been enforced. You do that, you lose the parking, which in return, you're trying to shove a hundred eighty-four cars in a monstrosity of a building and a one, two, three, four, eight. That's a lot, that's a lot, that's a lot of jam in there. There's a lot of people. One bedroom, maybe two professional people living together, I don't know. It's up to you guys, but, you know.
Well, that's, like I said, we'll, we'll vote on what we have in front of us today. We'll wait on the traffic study, it'll come back to us. You and I can be in contact.
Yeah.
And, uh, I'm just gonna take it for our team's word and, and the builder's word, I mean, they do it, I, I, I don't do it. Um, but let's see what, let's see what it comes back on. I mean, it's, it's a huge win overall for the entire village. At the end of the day. And is it nine thousand square feet of retail or is it more than that?
Nine thousand.
Nine thousand, okay. Okay.
We really don't know who's gonna occupy that, if it doesn't stop, we're not really getting the tax out of that car.
Yeah, but I, I think something like that, I, I would envision a restaurant, right?
On the corner, definitely we can push for a restaurant.
That would be nice.
And the property tax, regardless of the use, will still be coming through, so.
Well, my property tax will dominate the world.
Well, the way, I know, I think that's a very valid question, we'll have to rely on your property taxes less, one hundred percent. So the way we've been able to moderate our tax increases is through development, because we're adding new development, we can keep our taxes flat. I don't have to raise taxes. Police officer salaries, my salary, staff salaries go up three percent, I don't have to raise property taxes one percent because of the new development.
We've kept that in line as best we can.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, I, I get the point of widening Eastview, it's one time coming, it should have been widened with the distance that already is prior there. I just, I just don't see all these cars trying to make a left or even a right on Irving Park Road, that's a lot, a lot of cars, that's a lot of people, a lot of.
But I also don't see a developer coming in to spend millions of dollars to fail.
That's true.
Right? I mean, they, they're, they're making their money, they're making, they're building these buildings because they know what they're doing. So a reliance on them is one, a reliance on staff is the other, a reliance on the traffic study is another one. So we're relying on professionals to give us the answers that we would need. Right? I mean.
All right, well, let's see what the study's done.
Okay.
All right.
All right, anything else, are we good? Any other questions from the board? Okay. Let me see if I can find my place here real quick. Uh, please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona? Excuse me, trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, ordinance is passed. Eight is a resolution authorizing the purchase of ads on Com, on Comcast and not to exceed an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, the second discussion.
So as you may be aware, uh, we have, uh, well, village manager has spending authority up to ten thousand dollars. Uh, we are looking to actually run our first set of ads on Comcast in the amount of ten thousand dollars. But, uh, in speaking with the Comcast representative, uh, there's a thought that we would potentially go over that later this year if we continued, uh, sort of, he's got sort of a game plan for us. So in the just in case, we might go over and because we're gonna exceed the ten thousand dollar authority on the one vendor, we need, we're gonna ask for authority up to twenty-five thousand dollars. This is already budgeted in my community, in my economic development initiatives account, so it's not like it's a new spending, but this is something we did budget for.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Finance is informational item to be presented, uh, certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. Evan, you wanna take this over?
Yeah, so this is actually for the year, uh, our budget year, twenty twenty-one, we received the award for it, uh, they have to review all the audits and stuff. Um, this, this shows that our budget process and our budget book goes above and beyond what it needs to, we have to meet certain standards. Illinois state statute, very, we could have a very simple budget, we could say, police, we're gonna spend eight million dollars, CED, we're gonna spend a million dollars, public works, we're gonna spend four million dollars. Um, and that's it. We break ours down into line item detail, so you can see where the money's spent. I always say, if you look at a town's budget, you can see their values. We show that in our budget, this is a reward, a, award for that hard work that we put into it.
Just in time. Thank you. Uh, moving on to the police department. Uh, ordinance amendment to the village of Bensville, Illinois, amending chapter three of title five of the Bensville Village Code to regulate motor vehicle truck routes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, the second chief, we have discussion on this?
Yeah, just a little bit. We have a cartograph system in the village where residents can lodge complaints with the village. The not, three top complaints we get are trucks, overnight parking, and noise. The ordinances we're gonna present tonight try to address some of those. So the first one is truck routes. One of the things we did this year is we have a new full-time overweight truck officer, that, that's all he does eight hours a day, is enforce truck laws. One of the things we noticed is that some of the streets in the town, the way they were used, they should be truck routes and some shouldn't be. So like Jefferson, for example, is being added to the list where you shouldn't be there with a truck. Church Road, you can go three hundred feet with a truck and then you're supposed to stop, we're gonna make it all a truck route. So we're just changing the way that we're using the streets to reflect in the ordinances so they can be enforced.
Thanks, Ray.
Ray, you can't close the doors, you gotta leave the doors open. Ray, you gotta leave the doors open.
So this first ordinance amends some of the streets to be truck routes that are not currently.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about the interruption. Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, ordinance is passed. Two is an ordinance amendment to village code of the Bensville, Illinois, amending chapter two of title five to regulate motor vehicle traffic violation penalties. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, the second discussion?
This one addresses the penalties for parking tickets and tickets in the village. So we added some of the truck violations to this code so that they don't have to go through the eighteenth municipal district, they would come here to the village. And then we also looked at the fines that we charged. Our, our overnight parking tickets, for example, were twenty-five dollars. We looked and it's been thirty years since that ordinance has been amended. So we did a study of all the towns around the village. The range in fines for the base violation was anywhere from forty dollars to seventy-five dollars. So being that this will affect our residents, we went with the lowest number that, of any of the towns around us, we went with forty dollars. So we're, we're raising it slightly, but it's been thirty years since we have.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, ordinance is passed. Three is an ordinance amendment, village of Bensville, Illinois, amending chapter three of title five of the Bensville Village Code to regulate motor vehicle weight limits. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, the second discussion, chief?
This is another takeoff on trucks, so we looked at all the streets in the village and oftentimes you'll see a sign that says no trucks over five tons. Weight limit. So we looked at the way that the village is using the streets, there's some new streets that haven't been in the list. So we codified those streets and we made some of the streets five-ton weight limit streets, so the trucks cannot go down them. For example, Church Road and Jefferson. Some of the streets were, were getting a lot of truck traffic, but it really doesn't belong in the residential neighborhoods.
Questions from the board?
Yeah.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, ordinance is passed. Four is an ordinance for the village of Bensville, Illinois, amending chapter three of title four of the Bensville Village Code to regulate general offenses specifically to noise. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion.
We have a second. Being a motion, the second chief, we have discussion again?
Yeah, this, this is a noise ordinance violation and what this was meant to address is there's people that are complaining that, um, bands or music or certain things would generate noise. But the village's old ordinance didn't have any time limit on when you could or could not make noise and how much noise you were allowed to make. Again, we looked to our neighbors and we looked at other towns to see what they had done. We got copies of their ordinances and we picked out the things that we thought would be applicable to Bensonville. So now there's a time that you can make noise and after a certain time you can't make noise, and there's also a measurable metric that we can go and look at with a decibel meter and see how loud the noise actually is without just saying, yeah, that sounds loud to me. We can have something quantifiable and something that's objective and not subjective. So we wrote that in there based on the towns around us. And again, this is something new to us, the, this ordinance has not been amended in, over, over a decade. So we're, we're bringing this ordinance in and it may be a work in progress. If, as the gentleman said, it turns out to be wrong, we may have to amend it. But we have to have something to start with and see where the baseline is. We get a lot of complaints from residents about noise. Before anyone asks, no, we cannot write tickets to airplanes flying over our town.
Yeah, I wish you could cite those.
Nor, nor trains, that pesky interstate commerce clause.
Any questions from our board?
No.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, ordinance is passed. Five is a resolution to extend the intergovernmental agreement with the village of Addison for police dispatch services until April thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, the second chief, we have discussion?
Yeah, as you know, the state passed a law that said that all municipalities had to consolidate their dispatch services for police and fire. Years ago, the village of Bensonville, about twelve years ago, actually, the village of Bensonville went with the Addison Consolidated Dispatch Center, one of two in our county, either that or DUCOM. Um, the business model for ACDC that I've looked at works much better than DUCOM. DUCOM, you have to buy in and if they build a new building, we have to pay part of that building, you know, a percentage of it. With ACDC, they fund everything and they charge us a flat rate. So I think it's a better model for our size village. Um, they've included a modest increase both years, which was expected, and they're gonna provide dispatch services for, till twenty twenty-five. That's what this is for, so we can expend those dollars that are budgeted, this is not a new item.
And, and chief's right, the ACDC model, we're a customer and that's it, whereas the DUCOM model, you're an owner and so if there's a flood, you're paying for it. If the computers crash, you're paying for it. We're a customer, we just expect a service to be delivered.
Any other questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Public Works, ordinance of the village of Bensonville DuPage in Cook County, Illinois, amending title eight, chapter ten of the Bensonville Village Code to update the comprehensive forestry management plan. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, the second, Joe, we have discussion?
Yeah, everybody seems to be modifying their codes today, so I didn't wanna get left out. So this is a modification to the forestry management plan, it just identifies a couple of things that were recommended by, uh, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, Chicago Tree Initiative, Morton Arboretum. Um, it identifies a person that's assigned as authority of the public trees, which would be the director of public works. It gives the, uh, ability for an applicant to appeal any sort of, uh, process that we don't currently have in the, in the code. And then it also requires the use of certified arborists to work on our public trees. So those are the, the major impacts and it is our recommendation to approve.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, ordinance is passed. Two is an ordinance that designated certain properties as surplus and authorizing the disposal of the, of the same. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Joe?
Our surplus.
Stuff we don't need, we need to solve, get rid of and throw out.
Exactly, uh, tonight's ordinance has two vehicles, one police vehicle, one public works vehicle, and twenty-three pieces of IT equipment from the police department that we're looking to surplus.
Got it. Any questions from the board?
No.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, ordinance is passed. Three is a resolution authorizing the execution of a construction engineering services agreement with Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated for the Bryn Mawr Avenue and Burgenall, I always say that wrong, Drive Reconstruction Project and the not to exceed an amount of two hundred eighty-five thousand, four hundred ninety-four dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
We have a second. There being a motion is second. Joe, we have discussion?
Yeah, so the next two items are for our next construction project of 23 Bryn Mawr and I call it Burgenall reconstruction. Continuing our momentum in the North Business District, this project will utilize TIF funds to reconstruct both Burgenall and Bryn Mawr. The scope of the work is going to be a full reconstruction of these roadways, new concrete pavement, new curb and gutter, new sidewalks, new driveway aprons, some stores storm sewer construction, water main replacements, sanitary sewer repairs. We're going to be replacing the street lighting in the area as well as landscape restoration. So this first item has to do with the construction engineering. Civil Tech has been performing the construction engineering on our North Business District, basically on every project since 2012 up there. So they're very familiar with the area and how to work with businesses on these types of construction projects. They submitted a proposal in the amount of $285,494. This is 9% of the construction cost, which falls within our 7 and 10% range, and staff does recommend approval.
Questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Four is a resolution authorizing the execution of a construction contract to Millenium Contracting Company for the Bryn Mawr Avenue Burgenall Drive Reconstruction Project in the not exceeding amount of $3,171,556. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second. Joe?
So we opened bids on June 6th of this year. Six contractors submitted bids with Millennium Contracting Company submitting the lowest bid in the amount of $3,171,556. Again, this is for the construction of the aforementioned project and staff does recommend approval.
I just want to point out, we're spending a lot of money up in the North Business District, but that's what pays the bills around here. They're not the sexiest project. I don't see them all the time. You guys don't see them all the time, but that's what pays the bills. So this is an investment in our future and we're doing it with TIF funds, which is what we should be doing.
Questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Five is a resolution authorizing the execution of a design engineering services agreement with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated for the Red Oak Lift Station LS dash 01 and LS LS dash 02, replacement preliminary design study in the not exceeding amount of $56,343. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second. Do we have discussion?
So this project continues our initiative to replace our 18 sanitary sewer lift stations in town over the next 15 years. Red Oak Lift Station is actually two stations. They were built back in 1970 and 1978. This actual contract in front of you tonight is the first phase of our engineering. We would like our engineers to look at the feasibility of possibly combining these two into one big wet well. Reconstruct this as one lift station instead of two separate ones on the same site. This project or this contract will actually have them go out and do a survey of the area. They're also going to do what we're calling is a sanitary shed survey. So they're going to take a look at how the sanitary moves in the area to see if there's a better way to move the sanitary with a new force main or something like that. So it's preliminary design right now. Once we get the results of the study, we'll come back with a detailed design of a new lift station hopefully at that area. Probably next year with construction anticipated in 2024.
Any questions from the?
Yeah, what is what does that do, us combining one or combining two into one?
Hopefully it's going to save on energy as as well as provide more capacity for that area. So with two separate ones, you're doing two separate pumps. You're pumping a lot more. So hopefully combining it into one big wet well that everything can get into with one major pump, a more efficient pump that can push it out into our wastewater.
We have a very unusually high number of lift stations for a town our size where what, 19?
18 sanitary and two storm.
18 sanitary, two, that's a lot. And that's a lot of things that can break. When you combine them into one, there's fewer things that can break and the system all needs to work together.
The fact that one was built in 1970 and another one in 1978, the first one probably wasn't sized properly, so they built another one to resize it. It was cheaper at that point. Now we're looking to combine those two into one.
Cool. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Six is a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing a purchase order to Roche Ford of Bensonville, Illinois for the purchase of one public works vehicle in a not exceeding amount of $85,813. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second. Do we have discussion?
So this this purchase here is the the start of a process to replace our water main brake truck. Our water main brake truck is a 1997 step van. This takes care of two of the three components of this build. It's going to purchase the chassis straight from Roche Ford. It also will include the installation of a utility body, a step van body, basically through Utilimaster. So we're doing a purchase order through Roche Ford for the two components and that's what will be delivered to us. We're still negotiating on the outfit component of this project and hope to bring that back to you in July or August that would complete it. It's going to take probably six to eight weeks to build this vehicle, so we have some time before we finish the outfit.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Seven is a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing a purchase order to Alpamonte Ford of Melrose Park, Illinois for the purchase of two public works vehicles in the not exceeding amount of $113,206. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second. Do we have discussion?
So these two vehicles are two old 1997 step vans I think were used and acquired for SOC at that point. They are for our Julie locating and our customer service within the utility divisions. These are two perfect opportunities for us to start the electrified fleet here in the village of Bensonville. These these vehicles don't have a lot of hauling needs. They don't have a lot of plowing needs or anything like that. They are basically vehicles that drive around all day long, stopping consistently. They do need cargo storage, so that's why we went with a van on this situation in this situation. So Ford does make E-transits. It's an electronic version of their transit vehicle. We were able to find two 2022 ones, so this is a year old. We were able to get new ones that are a little bit cheaper. What we're seeing is that each year Ford is increasing their MSRP by about $4,500 on all their vehicles. So we were lucky to find two of them sitting here in our backyard in Melrose Park that they're willing to sell to us at $1,775 below MSRP. As we talked before, there are no state bids on these things these days, so we're out purchasing vehicles with the rest of the public. Looking for anything that we can get off of MSRP is kind of a good deal at this point. So these two vehicles, again, will start our electrified electrified fleet. We'll put in the electric vehicle chargers at our public works facility. We'll do that in-house. And we're excited to start this new venture.
You guys know I love a good pilot project. Our fleet guys haven't worked on electric vehicles, so this is a great opportunity for them to start learning that before we start expanding it.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Eight is a resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase order to Thomas Interiors for the purchase of furniture for the senior center in not exceeding amount of $154,591. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second. Do we have discussion, Joe?
Yeah, so these next two items are related to the senior center. Prior to Empire going out of business, there were a few lead heavy lead time items, specifically the furniture that we're using for the facility and also the appliances for the kitchen. The furniture itself had certain pieces that had 20-week lead times. We were anticipating and we hoped and we had thought that they had already purchased those and put the order in. They did not do that before they went out of business. So right now we are looking at possibly pulling this from the contract, from the surety bond. We would need permission to do that before we execute any sort of agreement or or cut a check. But we're looking to purchase these directly so that we can get the order placed and get some of these things and manufacture. Again, we're some of these things have 16 to 20 week lead times. We want to get a head start on that. So if we get permission from the surety to pull this from the contract and do it ourselves, this resolution gives us the authority to start a purchase order and make that purchase. So it's it's our recommendation to to approve this resolution and just knowing that if we do not get permission, we will not be executing any purchase orders.
Okay.
Any questions from the board?
No.
This is more proactive.
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Nine is a resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase order to ABT Electronics for the purchase of appliances for the senior slender in the not exceeding amount of $33,300. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second. Do we have discussion?
Similar to the furniture, the appliances, there's a couple of pieces of appliances that we're looking to purchase that have six to eight week lead times. So this, again, will give us the ability to purchase those directly. Same scenario, if we don't get the permission from the surety to do this, we won't be doing it. The amount on here right now is all based off of MSRP. I have a feeling that I'll be able to do a lot better with that once I start sitting down with apt and negotiating any sort of pricing. We're also asking the contractor, the surety, if there was any previous quotes or orders that the Empire Construction had on record that we didn't see. It's possible that they've had a better vendor and we'll reach out to that that vendor if we need to.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Informational item regarding a leak on the York Road sanitary sewer force main. Joe?
Yeah, so I just want to make the board aware. A couple of weeks ago, we found some sewage kind of surfacing way back behind Onion Park over by the railroad tracks. It turns out that after excavating this, there's a there was a hit on our sanitary force main. We had the utility locator out there. They hooked up to the conduit that appears to have hit our pipe, traced it back to AT&amp;T. So we're hoping that AT&amp;T is going to step forward and do a repair on this for us. But I wanted to make the board aware of this. Should there be any sort of need for an emergency repair that we would have to do, we would, if that happened, we would come back to the board to ratify any sort of agreements that we would make. I'm pretty confident that AT&amp;T is going to take care of this though.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to recreation, resolution. Resolution authorizing the execution of an ice arena and facilities usage agreement with the Fenwick High School Hockey Club. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion is second. Do we have discussion? Joe?
Yeah, so Fenwick High School has three hockey teams. They have JV team, a varsity team, and a girls' team. They've been with the village on and off for the last few years. They're looking to expand their program. One of the great things is we're adding some weekday morning ice to their contract, so they'll be practicing before school as well as immediately after school. Total resulting revenues are projected to be over $126,000 for the the 23-24 season.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Two is a resolution approving an ice license and facility use agreement with Chicago Cougars Junior A Hockey Team for 2023-2024. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
There being a motion is second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, so last year we were approached by Pete Olson, who owns the Chicago Cougars Hockey Team down in at Fifth Third Arena where in Chicago. And he also had a team that was playing in Addison by the name of the Chicago Crush. He wanted to see if he could move the Crush team over here last year. Timing just didn't work out. Through negotiations over the past few months, he wants to move both the Cougars teams here. They're going to be rebranded into one organization. They're going to have an elite team and a premier team in the U.S. Premier Hockey League, which has over 60 organizations in the United States. It's a one-year term with a two-year option. They're going to have daytime practices. These kids are 16 to 20 years old, either doing online remote school or have already graduated high school. So they're going to take over the 1230 to 310 ice slots, which traditionally we don't have the ability to sell. Roosevelt has some ice time with us, but we're going to be able to accommodate them and it's going to bring in about $133,000 annually. They'll work their game schedules around what Roosevelt is using in the evenings on Friday and Saturday nights. So this is a win-win.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, sir.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Three is a resolution authorizing purchase order for Zamboni Company USA Incorporated for the purchase of an ice resurfacing machine for the not exceeding amount of $122,990. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second. Discussion?
Yeah, so this was in the CIP plan for this year. Having ice resurfacers that are old and dated, you know, the ice is our number one commodity. That's what we're trying to sell. So we have to do a good job of keeping that ice nice and clean. Zamboni Company came in under budget. It was $135,000 for the purchase. They quoted us $122,990. And we're very excited to put this order in. It's about almost a year lead time, but we'll get it going.
When did we buy the last one? It seems like we just bought. I know we have two, right? We have one, three?
We have we have four resurfacers. One of them is a 1996 model. One of them is, I believe, a 2003 model. The third one is around 2012 and I think the newest one is around 2017-ish.
Okay.
Right.
Any questions from the board?
Only if I get to drive it, I'll say that.
We're looking for someone to drive it during the parade this year, if you're available.
Use the old one in the parade.
We are going to use the old one in the parade for sure.
Any questions from the board?
Can I drive it?
We are always looking for ice operators, but I don't think you guys are eligible.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. On to the presidential remarks. Our next senior lunch will be held on July 11th. Due to the Fourth of July holiday, it will still be held at Green Street Grill. The cost is $5. Doors open at 10 a.m. and lunches served at 11 a.m. For more information, please call the senior hotline. It's 630-350-3426. This year's Music in the Park Concert Series continues. Evan, our first weekly, we have 18, 19,000.
Yeah, 4 million people in Tennessee.
This is one of our bigger bands. Seventh Seventh Heaven will be coming June 8th, June 28th, which is one of our bigger bands. So come early to enjoy the many food options and check out the car show. People think set up their chairs about 5 a.m., 6 a.m. The music begins at 7:30 p.m., so for the complete Music in the Park schedule, please see the village website. Liberty Fest will be held on Tuesday, July 4th. The parade will begin at 10 a.m. in front of the village hall. The route will be traveling east on Green Street to York Road, south, and then west on Jefferson, ending at Redmond Park. Food, drinks, and activities begin at 6 p.m. at Redmond.